We now have a call. So if you'd please read the call. We apologize for delaying this meeting. First time it's happened in three years.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, workshop and regular meeting on Tuesday, March 7, 2006, at 5:00 PM, 5:10 PM and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive session item A, discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property.
May I move to go into executive session?
May I move to go into executive session? I'm sorry. Motion to go into the executive session by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Arroyo. All in favor? I'll oppose. Motion carries. Be in a short recess. Well, we got it now. All right. Dominic, where are you? Father?
Workshop item?
How does it feel?
Mayor?
We'll eat later.
Would you like for me to go ahead and read workshop item?
Yes. Workshop item A.
Workshop item A, discussion regarding Valley Initiative for Development and Advancement.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for putting this on the agenda today. I first of all want to thank the mayor. It was about two and a half years ago that he invited us, he invited us, to get together and start talking about economic development and particularly how Project VIDA could be used to enhance economic development here by having the poor students, perhaps mothers with kids who are in the poverty line, you know, take all the barriers off so that they can attend college and succeed and have better paying jobs and of course increase the tax base and help us with other issues here. So I want to thank the mayor for his support from the very beginning. He was, you know, he's the one that called us to the meeting. I also want to thank-
I did tell you the government moves very slowly at times.
Yes, it does. I also want to thank the commissioners, each and every one of you, because we called each and every one of you and Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Arroyo, and Commissioner Camarillo, and Commissioner Zaneros, and also Commissioner Longoria have all said yes that they would support this initiative. So I want to thank them for their support also because I think they're also interested in this kind of initiative. We want to also recognize that as board member of VIDA and as member of Valley Interfaith, there's people from Valley Interfaith, from all the way from Hidalgo County who have had great success, who are here with us, want to recognize them this afternoon. And I also want to, at this point, introduce to you as a board member for the VIDA, Mr. Dominic Hallaby, who will give you a short presentation and answer any questions you have with regards to the program. He is the executive director for VIDA, and so I'd like to introduce him to you now.
Thank you, Father. Mayor, Commissioners.
Welcome, Mr. Hallaby.
Thank you very much. I wasn't planning on doing a PowerPoint presentation, but when you look at a couple of those slides in that handout, they're awfully hard to read, so these gentlemen graciously agreed to put that on. Okay, this project we've titled the Brownsville Self-Sufficiency Project, presentation to the Brownsville City Commission. Just to give you an idea, VIDA is an independent nonprofit organization that was founded 10 years ago to help low-income unemployed and underemployed residents here in the Rio Grande Valley get the skills they need to get a good-paying job. The premise is built on the human capital theory. The idea is that as you, your skills increase, so too does your opportunities for advanced income or higher income. The primary nobel laureates that you'll see there, Becker, Schultz, all have attributed the earning gains of human capital to be in fact larger than capital equipment. VIDA's success, which we'll get to it a bit, is really focused on a couple key elements. One is that we're primarily locally funded. We're funded by several cities here in the valley, McAllen, San Juan, Mercedes, Port Isabel, and now Harlingen, which gives us a very limited dependence on state and federal regulations. So we are able to respond to the needs of the communities, the needs of local area businesses, at a much faster rate than having to go through DC or go through Austin to make appropriate changes. Also that because, as Father had mentioned, our connection to Valley Interfaith, to the community, we have the community very vested in our organization's success. So we have a number of individuals continually looking at what we do and how we operate. So we have a great sense of accountability. Plus, we have these weekly case management sessions. Each individual that goes through our program must meet with a counselor every week to be reminded of what they're going to complete, what program, what training program, what they're going to do at the end of that cycle. The VIDA, or a training program in that we focus on really three primary areas. These are demand occupations, higher income, I guess occupations, being nursing and allied health, manufacturing technology, and education and social services. These are the demands that are locally, not just here in Brownsville, but for the entire Rio Grande Valley. This is the slide that I was specifically pointing out that we really need to see it on the PowerPoint, and even still, it's probably very difficult to read. It's not haphazard in the way that the process-
Hard to even read on the handout.
On the handout, too.
It's too small.
But this is a flow chart that individuals, as they go through our entire process, coming from, the top part is the community outreach element. This can be done at churches, one-stop centers, individuals that will go in need of job training programs, be laid off or what have you, will come to the VIDA program and then asked to be referred for the continuation of services. They'll go through the entire process, but going through us, we'll work with them through the university to make sure that they can get accepted at their required training program and then guide them all the way through state exams, through passing of different exam levels, until they're fully competent and fully employable.
I have a question, sir. You mentioned the LVN and ADN programs. If a student is enrolled in the, through VIDA, is it much more likely that they get accepted in the primary, you know, first come, you know, do they get that, are they looked at a little bit differently than the other student who started out, took their prerequisites at university, and then applies to the program? Does VIDA move them a little bit faster above those other students, or is it just-
Not necessarily in this one respect. I could say yes and no. Yes in the fact that we offer concentrated THA preparation coursework. So individuals, in order to get into college, you have to pass the THA exam, that's your reading, writing, and your math. And if you don't pass any of those sections, you'll go through this kind of purgatory of college preparation courses and remediation. We offer concentrated coursework, so it's geared at getting these individuals completed with those three exams at a much faster rate. So in that sense, they are becoming much more prepared. However, the college doesn't have any, like checkbox that says, well, they're a VIDA participant, let's give the additional weight to go through the program.
You know, I hadn't thought about, when you brought that up, that made a lot of sense to me. If you're preparing students that haven't been in school for a while, as an example, and they have to go through the remedial course, and, I mean, we see, especially in high school, we see a lot of our kids going into, into college and not testing in to their college courses, having to take remedial courses. Do you foresee, or have you foreseen in the past, in the McAllen sector, where maybe your money has been spent on a lot of remedial courses and thus them not advancing in the career that they're choosing?
Well, the reason that we offer that concentrated coursework is because we won't pay for the remedial coursework, because it is that sense of you continually take remedial math, I mean, you could be locked in there for an elongated timeframe. So by concentrating that effort and getting these individuals to realize that they have got to pass that mathematics section, and if it's going to take going Monday through Friday, eight to five, for six weeks to do it, then that's so be it. That's what they have to do. It's better that than-
So the money will not be covering remedial courses as far as tuition is concerned?
No. The best predictor of our success-
Mr. Hallaby, let me ask you to put your mic up. There you go. Let me get a better sound out of your voice.
Okay. Hopefully, that's a little, a little better. Oh, well, okay. The, well, thank you for pointing that out. The best predictor of our future success in Brownsville is perhaps to look at our current success that we've had in another city. And what we've done is looked at the McAllen Self-Sufficiency Project, a project that's been funded by the City of McAllen since 1998. In that particular program, which is between us and South Texas College, we've served nearly 1,500 McAllen-area residents. 800 of them have been in this post-secondary occupational training that you see in those LVNs, those RNs, the higher echelon training programs that you find at the college. This is just a demographic profile for those individuals so that you see that on average, we're not talking about the individuals that just came out of high school, average age of 30 years, 3.2 dependents, and a large 25% receiving nearly $300 in food stamps. At the time, using unemployment insurance records, not our wage data, or not what they tell us their earning, we got this, collected this data from the state, and we saw the quarterly earnings before they entered our program for these individuals was roughly $1,800 before the training program. For the time that they were in training, which on average was about 56 weeks, their training dropped, as you can imagine, to about $487 per quarter. But look at what happened after training. A sizable increase in the earnings of those individuals to $6,900 per quarter. This comes out to roughly $28,000 per year, a sizable increase for the individuals that went through this program. Now, we also went back to look to say, okay, those individuals that went through our program, we used some methodology through the state of Massachusetts, since we don't have a control group, we utilized individuals who were found eligible and were assessed through our program, and we collected their wage earnings through unemployment insurance, though they didn't go through our training, because we wanted to compare, how much did their income increase? For those individuals that were eligible but didn't go through our training, we saw a 7% increase throughout that timeframe, compared to 378% increase in earnings for those that actually were eligible and did go through. We looked back with those UI records to test to see how many were staying within the community that provided the training. By using the location of their employer, we saw an 89% stayed within the McAllen MSA. Only 11% left, and that other area includes Cameron County, Webb County, and the other nearby communities. We adjusted, using the Better Jobs Initiative that was performed in the City of San Antonio, we looked at how much the training program cost throughout the duration of this time, and how much money went back into the community in the form of sales tax and property tax to see what the benefit was to the City of McAllen, and we saw a net present value of 111% return, which means for every dollar the City of McAllen invested, we saw a $2.11 payback to the community. And that's just in, that's not a multiplier, that's not any of these fancy things, this is just what they collected back in sales tax and property tax from these individuals. Based on the amount of roughly a $3 million investment, that's roughly $5.1 million returned back to the City of McAllen since 1998. Again, using that program, what we were able to do in McAllen throughout the eight years of that success, and seeing how we can replicate that success here in Brownsville, and to give these individuals in this community that same opportunity to benefit, we want to see how we can partner together, the City of Brownsville and VIDA and the university, to be able to make these programs available to these area residents.
Does anybody have any questions? We're going to have this item again in the agenda, so if you do have any questions, we can take it up at that point. We're trying to get back on schedule, so bear with us, Mr. Hallaby. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Item B. Josh?
Item B, discussion regarding the Animal Regulation and Care Advisory Committee.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this item was discussed at previous meeting, and this is to consider the term of the advisory committee currently held at the, for the advisory committee at the shelter. Currently are indefinitely. Previous discussion was maybe considering a term of two years, a year. It's here for your discussion.
What seems to work best with you? Two years?
Two years will be fine, and most of the terms are two years.
They kind of get their feet wet, and then the second year, they're really on a roll.
Right. And yes, we discuss, it gives the opportunity to other citizens in the city they're eager to serve to as well.
Any other questions? Josh, anything else?
No.
All right. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C.
Item C, discussion regarding fat, oil, and grease associated with Brownsville Public Utilities Board building inspections and public health.
On the table. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, again, we bring this item to you relating to the grease and oil, as we discussed in a previous commission meeting. We're here to present to you the modifications was done by the PUB and some other changes. I'll have members of the PUB come over.
They become known as the grease guys in Brownsville.
Yeah.
As long as I'm not the oil.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. On January 3, we brought before you the Oil and Grease Ordinance to the City Commission. It was recommended we revise the ordinance to find alternatives for small businesses to specifically address the cost of grease interceptors. After listening to our customers, board, commission, we made inquiries of other programs and reevaluated our ordinance to develop a viable solution for everyone. Currently, we have included alternatives for small businesses and incorporated a surcharge program. We believe this ordinance is a good compromise and a win-win situation for small businesses. The utility, the environment, it ultimately complies with state regulations. At this time, we have a short presentation, so I'll have Ramiro Capistrán come up and run through that. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, good evening. I'm here to present the modifications to the ordinance. I'll just go straight to the point. The first modification provides alternative to small establishments. Grease traps, alternative grease removal devices are prohibited for new food service establishments, except for those facilities where inadequate space is available for installation of grease interceptors, for example, the downtown area. Also, if water consumption is less than 40,000 gallons of water per month, we looked at our database, taquerias, deli shops, they use less than 40,000 gallons per month. Except, also, they have to get written approval by the pre-treatment manager, so he'll study on a case-by-case basis.
Who's the pre-treatment manager?
I am.
You are. How's that going to work? In other words, somebody says, okay, I want to open up a restaurant, but it's just going to be a little taqueria?
Pretty much, we'll allow grease, allow grease interceptors.
And then the backup, in the event that they're either misleading you or their business increases or both, we have, under this new ordinance, the ability to go ahead and basically either modify it that they have to put it in, or are you going to charge them a-
A surcharge.
-surcharge based upon the amount of-
Of solids and chemical state discharge. This is, this is, the second alternative is to implement a surcharge program to minimize introductions of pollutants into the collection system. If the generator has wastewater above the normal strength, our limit's 200 for total suspended solace and 200 for BOD, biochemical oxygen demand. That means any pollutant or chemical that would displace oxygen in our wastewater. A monthly surcharge will be based on analytical data on water consumption. Each establishment is going to be sampled at least once every six months.
So you can't give, you can't give a specific amount of what that surcharge will be unless-
Well, I do provide an example through down the presentation. This is the surcharge formula that we'll be using. It's already set forth in the PUB scheduled charges and fees. BOD and TSS, those are analytical measurements we get from a laboratory, and BOD and TSS, those are our limits. We have a 200 milligrams per liter limit. A and B, that's a dollar amount for the pound of excess, BOD and TSS, and it takes into consideration the volume in gallons per-
How are you going to explain this to normal people? Because I don't understand what you're talking about.
Well, this is, this is a formula.
Okay.
What we do, the BOD, TSS, that's from analytical, what we get, we plug it in the formula, and it's based on water consumption and analytical. And for example, for BOD, if you see, the analytical came out to 300, our limit's 200, there's a 100 milligrams per liter difference, and on TSS, there's a 200 milligrams per liter difference, and they have 40,000 gallons of water consumption per month, roughly they'll be paying $19.50. We're planning to have workshops before we implement this for the community, food establishments. Anybody prepares food so they can know, and we'll explain this in more further detail. And here are the benefits. Only establishments above the normal sewer strengths will pay for the excessive amount. Establishments can upgrade treatment devices to avoid or minimize surcharges, will maintain treatment devices and reduce pollutants in our system. Implementing this surcharge program would eventually reduce the sanitary sewer overflows. Therefore, we'll be complying with federal and state regulations.
Anybody have any questions?
Questions?
First of all, let me take this opportunity, this has been a long process, and I want to commend both of you and everybody at PUB and at the city to address this issue, which addresses the environmental concerns that we need to do from a regulatory standpoint in order to be compliant with the state, and also allowing our small businesses the opportunity to continue to open up without making it an undue burden for them to comply with excessive regulations. So again, I want to commend everybody at PUB and at the city, and especially the grease guys, for coming through on this. I know it wasn't easy, so I appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. We'll get back to you in the regular meeting. Thank you. I hope we have some special individuals that are going to lead us this evening in the pledge of allegiance. Jacob Javier.
Sarah Sandoval.
And Kevin Joseph Casas. You can see, three of Brownsville's finest, a couple of Cub Scouts and a Brownie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one and indivisible two.
Let's give them a big round of applause. Do we have anybody here for the invocation? I was getting ready to call on Reverend Longoria, but I forgot you're in the audience, Father.
You've been dropped, Father.
If you would, if you would do us the honor.
Be honored. Lord God, we ask your blessing upon each and every one of us, upon our city, and upon all the candidates, as the voting is going on at this time, for different positions in our county and state government. We ask your blessing upon each and every one of our commissioners and our mayor, and upon all our public service employees here in our city, and upon each and every one of us, that we may always think of the good of others. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. You must have done this before on show notice, Father. Now, item number one, Employee of the Month, Mr. Cavalier.
Mayor, members of the commission, please help me welcome our employee of the month for March, Mary Saldana.
She looks familiar.
Mary works at our building officials' office at the City Plaza. Now, she's been with us since July of 2002. She's administrative tech one. She's got various responsibilities at the, at the building department, including processing permits, inspection requests and results, supplying those to the public, and of course, she offers a lot of general information to the, to the public as they come in and ask for certain issues. And we're very proud of her. I mean, I've seen her at work, and Mr. Navarro has seen her at work, where she is not feeling her best, but she still comes in, she's very reliable, she's very initiative, she, she helps us with training in some of our newer staff and our present staff. So as employee of the month for March, of course, she gets the, our pin.
Thank you.
And our hat, I'm sure she'll wear it at work. The plaque. And of course, she's eligible for the employee of the year in December at our banquet. So congratulations, Mary.
Thank you very much.
She's got some words to say.
Congratulations.
I would like to thank my director, Mr. Gamas, Mr. Navarro, and all my coworkers for their support. Without them, I wouldn't be able to receive all of this, and I really, I really liked what I do. I really like my job. I really like to help my customers, the citizens. I've been dedicated to provide good customer service and satisfaction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Keep up the great work.
Item two, consent agenda items A through J.
Approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. For those of you in the audience who have not yet voted, I would ask that you please be sure you have 15 minutes left to do it. So we're going to try to go through this meeting as quickly as possible. Item three.
Item three, consideration and action to appoint two members to the airport advisory board.
Larry had given us a couple of names on it. I'd like to, a little bit more time to discuss this, Commission. I think it's a good idea, maybe even to consider appointing two people. I know the current board member would like to serve again, and he's been a great asset, but I think it would maybe be extremely beneficial to have another member from the island in view of the tourist destination that it is. So, would you, motion to table?
Motion to table.
Motion to table by Commissioner Zaneros, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Item four.
Item four, consideration and action to appoint two members to the transit advisory committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I do have two appointments that, one expired in October, Mr. Velez, who is Commissioner Longoria's appointment, and then Mr. Briones, who's Commissioner Bento Court's appointment. This time, I don't know if-
Norm, I do have an appointment, but unfortunately, Mr. Lopez left out of town, and I just need his verbal confirmation. If it's okay, I would, please table for the next meeting and-
And I tell you what, I think it would, and to show some respect for our incoming commissioner, I think we ought to leave that spot available. It's only going to be two months, eight weeks, so. Is that all right, Norm? You should be able to conduct business without him. All right. We have a motion to table by Commissioner Longoria?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor? All oppose. Motion carries. Item five.
Item five, consideration and action to amend the appointments of and to appoint or reappoint citizens to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, tonight I present to you a list, and that list of names that are new to our list are printed in red, and what I would like to request from the commission is that the appointments be made under District One of Maribel Quiros, under District Number Three, Antonio Martinez, and under District Four, Mini Garcia, and under Commissioner Hernandez at large, Sue Alton. And this list will replace all other lists that have been previously approved.
Can we approve them all together, or do we have to approve them individually? If that's your recommendation, and you're, those appointments will be made, I assume, as per the particular commissioner, right?
Particular commissioner, yes.
Everybody's, yeah. Well, I mean, I assume that's where you got the names from, so. So we can take care of it in one motion.
Would it move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Zaneros. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries. Next item.
Item six, consideration and action to appoint three members to the graffiti advisory committee.
Motion. You don't give the motion. I always give you credit. Whoever makes the-
Whoever makes the motion, even though he actually uses the right word, since you don't know how to speak English.
Camarillo? Miller?
Commissioner Camarillo?
Yes, last time, I believe, we tabled the mayor and Commissioner Hernandez, you had a person to appoint to the graffiti advisory committee. I don't know if you have that appointment.
Oh.
Which one?
Not, we can wait another...
Not ready.
I did call the person that I wanted to appoint, but I've not heard back from them. So why don't we...
We can table that.
Okay.
Lisa, call Lisa.
Motion to table by Commissioner Camarillo?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
We're going to go to item fifteen, Mayor, first.
Can I just ask a question to Commissioner Camarillo?
Yes.
Commissioner, who's going to be notifying the appointments when your meetings are scheduled?
I'm sorry, can you restate that again?
Who is going to be calling the members of, because my appointment said that he hadn't been notified, and he wanted to be notified to be sure of...
City Secretary's Office.
City Secretary's Office.
Taking care of that.
We can do that, or even the department can do that if they have all their names. Because generally, they have the addresses of these people. We basically just get all their names. So we're going to have to work together with the departments to get that out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and six dash zero eleven dash A to amend resolution number two thousand and six dash zero eleven for the purpose of adding two alternate members to the Northwest Brownsville Steering Committee.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. This has come forward once again just to make sure that everything stays in line with the, so that the resolution is representative of the numbers that are chosen for the group. So the last time, we had nineteen total members with thirteen and six alternates. However, there were more people nominated, so to make sure that everything gels together and matches, we just need to amend the resolution to do the additional nominations being Alice Gonzalez and Commissioner Camarillo.
All right. Motion approved by, I'm sorry, Commissioner Longoria?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven.
Item seven, consideration and action to name the thirteen voting members from an approved list of participants of the Northwest Brownsville Steering Committee.
Thank you. And at this point, just to choose the actual voting members from the steering committee, thirteen voting members total. The remainder will be alternate.
That's a lot of votes.
Will they be named?
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right.
As far as, I'm sorry, if I can interrupt, it's actually picking individual, individuals from the list to be voting members from that list for...
It's to name the thirteen voting members?
Yes.
Of, off of that list.
Right, correct.
We need to have names of the thirteen people.
Edward, it's your committee. Do you, would you be the one to decide who you want as voting members, or?
I tell you what...
I think we could decide when we first meet, Chris. That was my understanding, but I could be wrong. It was my understanding that we actually, that it would go to council, and that the actual voting members would be chosen. That's how I understood it.
All right. So the thirteen voting members, well, has now been selected. That's what you're asking us to do.
Correct. The committee has been chosen, but not the voting members.
Commissioner, why don't you formulate who, what areas or, what groups need to be represented, and that way you can break up the thirteen votes? Well, why don't we table this?
My only concern on this, Commissioner, is that, you know, being such a big group and conflicts and agendas, that you'll have thirteen voting members, and some show up, and then you don't have a quorum for your votes on the action you need to take.
Correct.
Would it move to table?
Motion to table by Commissioner Longoria?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
I withdraw my motion.
No, because technically, all we approved is what we've already approved, which is the number of members. But that wasn't what the action item called for. Jim, is that right?
That's correct.
All right.
Would it move to table?
Motion table by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to take another item out of order.
Number eighteen.
What was it, Josh?
Number eighteen.
Number eighteen, yes.
Consideration and action to approve donation of surplus equipment from the old animal shelter to the Brownsville Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable Commissioners, at the request of the Brownsville Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, we have some surplus equipment, some igloos, some cages at the old shelter that we vacated on Military Highway, and they're requesting a donation of this old equipment. It could be old to us, but it could be useful to them, to the animals that they pick up and they collect throughout the city.
Would it approve? Second.
Absolutely. Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for all your help.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you for all your help.
Item...
Item number eight.
Number eight.
Public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and six dash eight fifty-six dash KK, amending the code of ordinances of the City of Brownsville by amending ordinance number nine fifty-six, chapter fifteen, garbage and trash, section fifteen dash eight, specifying charges for sanitation service by amending subsections C one and four A, providing for an effective date, providing for severability, and ordaining other provisions relating to the subject matter thereof.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, this item, it's a public hearing, but all we're doing here is, obviously, we're increasing the BFI's share, but we also want to make sure that...
It's already been increased.
Yes. All we're doing now...
By contract.
By contract. And we're just in the city, we're not increasing the curb size for the city's portion. We are increasing, or we recommend an increase for the two containers, because right now, the two containers is not paying enough service, so it's only eighty-five cents. And the other recommendation is ten cents for the walk-in. We, obviously, when this...
So the two container increase on the city's portion is going to be eighty-five cents?
Eight cents.
And for the walk-in, ten cents?
Now... Curb side zero.
Eighty-five cents more, right?
Right.
Eighty-five cents.
My only concern, when I was talking to Pete about this earlier, and I wanted to bring before commission, when he said the walk-ins, that's when the driver has to get off to bring, you know, he has specified areas or places where he has to pull it out. My only concern is if we have an elderly person. Why should an elderly person have to pay ten cents more? I mean, that driver, it kind of was hard to get, have to get out because of, you know, I don't want an elderly person paying ten cents more per month if that is the situation, you know, where it's a walk-in, that the driver has to go pull it out. If that person's disabled, he or she can't take it out of the curb.
Well, I don't disagree, but if that's the case, I would think that they'd be the ones wanting the curb service and not going through the effort on that. But Carlos, you want to explain that?
They're already getting it.
Commissioner, that issue is a, what they call in Siskiyou, it's like a backdoor service. People pay, they don't have to be elderly. They pay for that service so the driver can go pick it up. And it has many issues, but they pay for that extra service for that. In particular, it doesn't discriminate age at all.
So you're saying anybody can have that service? Mr. Ayala?
Yes. If I want the trash picked up, I would have to pay extra. It's called, it used to be called backdoor. I didn't realize they'd changed the name.
It's the same thing. It's the same service. Is that right?
Yes. In other words, it's seldom, but they do every now and then for somebody that cannot carry the trash, they will, they will get it, they will go pick it up.
Well, for someone who chooses not to carry it, is that true?
But someone chooses and they call and says, we need backdoor service, meaning they will pick up the trash, they will go, and they pay extra for that. That's the issue.
So maybe there should be a separate category for the disabled and the elderly.
Well, but what you're saying is, it doesn't matter. They're going to pick it up at the house whether they're disabled or elderly or not.
Regardless?
Is that right?
They're very few and far apart, the people that cannot get the container up to the...
Carlos, the question is whether or not, if somebody calls for this service, they're going to pick it up, and the person calling for it is not going to have to do anything for it. Is that right?
That is correct.
Regardless of whether they are elderly or disabled or not?
That's correct.
Okay, so they don't have to do the work?
That's right. It's a call for service, you pay for it.
Well, yeah.
Special service.
That's only if they call for it. Motion to approve, I'm sorry, we have a, this is a public hearing? Motion to close?
Close, public hearing.
Motion to close by Commissioner Royall, seconded by Commissioners Hernandez. All in favor? All opposed, motion carries, action?
Do you approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Royall?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioners Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
Item number nine, consider, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and six dash fourteen forty-nine, amending the code of ordinances, chapter one oh two, utilities, by adding a new article number nine entitled Fat, Oil, and Grease.
Very, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, again, this is the item in reference to the grease and oil, as we discussed in the workshop. At this moment, we request your, an action item to be approved.
Any other questions?
Unless we need further discussion.
Again, maybe just for purposes of alerting any business that's going to be affected by this ordinance, there will be in place workshops. We're going to schedule workshops to apprise and advise everybody of these changes, and also the impact, if any, that they're going to have either on existing or on new businesses regarding either the grease traps, interceptors, and/or waste control, I guess is maybe a good way of putting it.
That's correct, Mayor. We'll be conducting at least five, three to five workshops, and before we commence with this.
And we've had people at all of our other meetings, but I think we've reached a good, fair resolution. Is there anybody here to discuss this or comment on it? This is a public hearing? All right?
Ramiro, my only comment to this is when you all are doing these inspections...
Yes.
And when you all are dealing with these customers, please, like you always do, keep our customers in mind.
All right.
You know, don't, we would hate to see our small business people affected by this. You know, let's work with them. Let's just, you know, let's keep that in mind.
Yes. And again, they're also our business, so we got to work with them and help them out, a part of the community.
Follow our Employee of the Month mantra, which is customer service. Mary Saldana's customer service goal, so. All right?
Would it close, public hearing?
Motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action?
Would it approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Royall. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen. Item ten.
Item ten, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and six dash eleven sixty-nine dash B, an ordinance amending chapter ten, animal regulation and care, article two, animal regulation and care advisory committee. In particular, amending section ten dash thirty-one, subsection B, entitled Organization, and ordaining other provisions relating to the subject matter.
Sorry, Commissioners and Mayors?
You got so excited that it passed.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is in reference to the term of the advisory committee members for the animal shelter. We had discussed it in the workshop, and we agreed that a two-year term. The only request we have at this moment may be to leave the current members for that term, for their two-year term, and then advise them, or we would like to bring this back so we can appoint new members.
Find out who would like to, you know, allow some other people to serve, and if there are some openings, then you can bring them back to us.
I should...
This is a, go ahead.
No, that's correct. Thank you.
This is a public hearing?
Would it close?
Motion to close by Commissioner Royall, seconded by Commissioner Longoria. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action?
Would it approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Royall, seconded by Commissioners Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Josh. Now you can leave.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Item eleven.
Item eleven, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and six dash zero zero five, to rezone from dwelling A and G classification to general retail G classification, five point zero zero one acres out of nineteen point seven nine five acre tract of blocks one and two of RA Leek Estates near Frontage Road and Denet Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the area shaded in red. This is the expressway here. This blue is the Riscole Children's Hospital. The Plan Zoning Commission voted in advocacy to approve this recommendation of the zoning change to you. This is a site of a proposed hospital.
Would it close, public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action?
Approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Royall. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item twelve, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and six dash nine oh five dash S, to allow a specific use pylon sign in a zero fifty-one tourist corridor overlay district for University Park subdivision, unit three, near East Avenue and Expressway seventy-seven eighty-three.
To allow it?
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the area for the proposed sign, business sign. This is a tourist corridor overlay, which means that for this particular case, no pylon signs are allowed, only monument signs. This case went before the Plan Zoning Commission at two meetings. At the last meeting, at the direction of the Plan Zoning Commission, staff came up with a recommendation of a proposed sign to allow a sign for Ueta business. And what staff came up was, we looked at the area, and to follow and to mitigate the area with this sign, where there is no sign allowed. We only have one on the current site right now, which is the Burger King, and we imposed this in our computer, this sign that staff came up with, and we used some of the architecture of the university. In this case, you have the student union with its columns. We tried to incorporate those here. The Plan Zoning Commission approved this sign with the addition of a message board right below the Ueta sign.
Below or above?
Below. Since then, since after the meeting, the Ueta business has provided the city with another concept of their sign, which has a roof and the message board, but this is what they had proposed before, the Ueta sign, straight steel columns. They also wanted another sign here at the bottom and a message board. The Plan Zoning Commission did not agree with this and adopted our sign, because the business does need a sign. We agree that it's on the hump of the expressway. It's not visible from the expressway, so we came up with a concept. This is what they, since after the Plan Zoning Commission, have come up with. The message board is underneath this little canopy and a little roof, but they have the Ueta sign, which is the same as we approved here. So that's what's before you, Mayor and City Commissioners.
Mr. Medina, I'm very ambivalent about this, because we just passed a sign ordinance, and, you know, we weren't going to be making exceptions to the rule, and beautification has been calling, they're involved. If we're going to start making exceptions, then why did we hone in on our sign ordinance and say we were going to be upholding all these new rules?
I thought the ordinance dealt with a lot of off-premise issues. I thought the ordinance dealt with a lot of off-premise issues.
It dealt with off-premise signs. Off-premise, but also business signs, on-premise signs. In this case, the Plans Zoning Commission studied the situation here. The situation is a little bit unique, that the site is further away from the expressway because of the texted right-of-way, sort of like obscured by the hump on the overpass of the Veterans Bridge. So we looked at it. We know that the only monument signs are allowed. And they do have a monument sign on their business, but what they would like to, they would like to be visible from the expressway. And the way the expressway is built, it's sort of, there's a lot of obstruction. They're obscured because of vegetation and because it's just the right-of-way, they're further away from the expressway. So they wanted a 35, a 135-foot sign. They brought it down to 75 feet. The Plans Zoning Commission agreed to this concept, which has this parapet up here. That's, their building has this on the rooftop, and then the columns, the colors, all natural, neutral colors. And then the P&amp;Z, this picture doesn't have it, but they did add a message board down here. Since then, they have come up with their design. Would you want to present that back up? Which is, has the canopy, and the message board is switched. It's now on top, and the Ueta sign. We believe that what they wanted was the Ueta sign to be visible, not the message board. But in this case, they want the message board to be on top. But that's...
Was that an issue at P&amp;Z or not?
That issue was not...
Whether it was on top or bottom, it didn't matter?
No, we didn't discuss that because what we had before...
It was a height issue.
Just the height and the design.
They went ahead and lowered it down to 75?
Yes, sir. I see a couple of people standing, so let me give everybody a chance to speak. This is a public hearing. If you can be brief, we'd appreciate it.
I will be brief. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm Luis Escareño, and I represent Ueta Duty Free. As you know, we've been in the Brownsville area for about 30 years, and we've done very well here. And this is our effort to expand. We'd like to continue to do well here. We need a new store. We would like a new store. This is a great location, but for the hump. And therefore, for our store to be successful, commercially successful, we feel we need the pylon sign. Now, there have been many steps that have been taken on our part to try and reach an agreement with our neighbors and with the people that are concerned about beautification and those sorts of issues. So we did compromise and did bring down the size of the sign. We felt that that's as low as we could come, otherwise we don't have the benefit of having the sign. We also made sure that we were architecturally consistent with the area. We appreciate the city staff's work. We felt that the canopy would, one, protect the message board, but also add to the beauty of the sign itself. We think we've been very reasonable. We think we've worked really hard to try and incorporate people's thoughts and concerns. And we think it's a beautiful sign, and I think people will be very pleased with the store and with the sign in place. And we've been very, very sensitive to folks' comments and needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Escareño. Anyone else?
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, y'all know who I am. Mari Bell. I'm with the Brownsville Beautification Committee. I'm just here to express some of our concerns on behalf of the commission, uh, committee. Sorry. First of all, we want to express that prior to the developer purchasing the property, he had to know that this was in the 051 overlay, and there are restrictions to the type of signage that you can have. The 051 district overlay strictly stipulates that no pylon signs are to be located on premises. Secondly, I think a message board...
That's, this is called a pylon because it's on the two poles or two...
Yes. Right. It is a pylon sign. And I think a message board would distract travelers on the expressway, which is a safety issue right now that I just picked up on. And secondly, thirdly, I guess, is that the 051 overlay was made to protect integrity of what the visual aesthetics of that area was going to be, supposed to protect how that area was going to look, to promote tourism, to try to attract people to that area. It is a major gateway into our city. So for aesthetic purposes, we oppose what they're proposing for this sign, and would like to see a monument sign or have them work closely, maybe even better, with the beautification committee or with the university, try to come up with a better resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mari Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I also will keep it brief. My name is John Renaud, Vice President for Administration and Partnership Affairs at UTB TSC. And I think you know that UTB TSC is very committed to promoting positive businesses in our community. As an example, we continue to develop the former Amigo Land Mall as the International Technology Education and Commerce Campus, in part to promote business, technology, and workforce training. A small business incubator is one of the important programs at ITech, as you know. Also, I'd like to note that we have enjoyed and received excellent cooperation with the businesses already located in River Center. The architectural design and facades of the Burger King and Circle K, for example, are very much in keeping with the historical nature of the Fort Brown campus in Brownsville, we think, and we appreciate their cooperation. We've had several conversations with the Ueta representatives, and we believe that they would be great neighborhood business. What we remain opposed to, however, is a violation of the provisions of the 051 tourist corridor overlay district. We believe that the city showed wisdom in establishing that district in the Fort Brown area. And as you well know, the people of Texas Southmost College District, which of course includes Brownsville, have invested a great deal of money in the building of the campus. And I think that you would agree that we have been successful in building facilities with an architectural style that our citizens could be proud of. We simply believe that the construction of this sign, as now designed and proposed, especially with the electronic component, would detract from the campus, especially now that University Boulevard is the new front entrance to the campus in the city. The city, as you know, PUB and the university have invested a great deal of money in University Boulevard in upgraded lighting, landscaping, and bridge improvements to make this gateway to the campus and city look special. We simply believe that the proposed sign would detract from this new main entrance to the campus and city. And frankly, we believe that our students deserve better than to have liquor advertisements flashed at them each time they enter and leave the campus.
Also, the city had a lot to do with the beautification and what got put into that, into the loop.
Yes, Commissioner, absolutely. However, we do want to state again, and we have said this before, that we remain... We're certainly not opposed to signage. We know a business needs signage. And we remain willing to, as Mari Bell stated, to visit with Ueta, the city, beautification committee, or whomever, about a type of signage that might be acceptable to all parties. Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Dennis Sanchez. I'm here on behalf of FGRM Corporation, which is the developer of the 29-acre tract known as River Center. Back in mid-'90s, we subdivided the property. There was no overlay district at that time. And we, on our own, met with the college and met with one of the college's architects and then hired one of our own architects out of Houston to come up with a plan of covenants or restrictions that would complement the college architecture style. We even submitted them to the college for their review before we adopted them and filed them of record. So we, from day one, have wanted, have always been sensitive to the needs of the college. We were not aware of this overlay district until we sold the tract of land, until after we sold the tract of land to Ueta. That's the very first time that it ever came to either Ueta's or our knowledge of the fact that there was an overlay district at the time that we...
When was it established, the overlay?
It was adopted, I believe, in about '99, something like that.
'99.
And we filed our covenants restrictions and subdivided back in '96 or '97. So that was a problem. We started when we found that out, and the sale occurred to Ueta, I believe, in March of '05. We then went to P&amp;Z and have been working with them since May of '05. We've had many, many meetings. Ueta spent a bunch of money getting engineers and architects to come up with designs. And they have actually been able to prove scientifically that it's impossible to know that Ueta is there unless you have a 75-foot sign, because when you come in over the hump, you just don't see it in time to get off onto the off-ramp. And on behalf of FGRM, the developer, what we offered to do to the planning and zoning is say, look, all of the other acreages that we own, we don't want to get any signs. We will volunteer not to put any pylon signs of any sort in there. And, of course, but we do need to get this for Ueta. They bought in good faith. I believe they checked with the city at the time that they were doing their due diligence, and nobody told them it was in an overlay district. And it's really not really good public, there wasn't enough public knowledge that this overlay district existed. So at any rate, this is where we're at. There's been a lot of efforts back and forth to try to accommodate each other, and it has happened to a large extent. And so we're asking that this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Bless you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Dr. Savalletta.
I'm Tony Savalletta, University of Texas at Brownsville and Texas Southmost College. I am confident that this issue can be resolved. I would hope that we would not rush into a mistake that we would regret. I feel, as has been suggested here tonight, if the principals would be able to get together with their architects and engineers, they could come up with a design that would be acceptable to all parties. And so I urge you, in this case, to, using your wisdom, defer and send it back to the principals to work it out and come back to you in a future time with an acceptable design. Thank you.
Well, in case we don't agree, I hope that doesn't affect our wisdom, Dr. Savalletta.
Mayor, Commissioners.
Ms. Salinger.
My name is Leland Salinger, and I was the only dissenting vote, or dissenting voice, I'm sorry, at the planning and zoning meeting two weeks ago when this sign was first put up for public comment. I'm against the sign. I'm very much for the 051 overlay district, tourist corridors, and all the other ordinances and zoning zones that we put in, like this tourist overlay. And basically, at that meeting, I was actually stunned that our group here with the city was designing signs for a private business that actually were in violation of the ordinance and the zoning of that area. I was actually stunned when this happened. So in the last two months, or two weeks, I've been sending you all, sending you all letters and what have you on the outcome of that meeting. I'm stunned about that. I'd like to talk about that at another meeting, but I'm against this sign right now in this area. And the contention by the representative of the developer here that they won't put any more pylon signs in there is it won't be good, it won't be a covenant, because somebody can go back to the planning and zoning board and the group and apply for another sign. There's no way to stop them if you put one in, and we need to stop this now. And I'm hoping that you all make a decision not to put this in and put in the monument sign that was originally designed for this type of zoning application.
I'm going to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
We had a interesting, I think you were at last week's, or last meeting, regarding the passing of the sign ordinance?
Yes, sir.
One of the arguments made by the representative of Lamar is that this sign ordinance that we passed would impact businesses and economic development. And my comment to him was, I don't think it will, but I can tell you that this city commission is not going to do anything that's going to impact it without jeopardizing all of the hard work that the Brownsville Beautification Committee has done. And don't get me wrong, maybe we were on opposite sides on this particular one, but I do admire everything that you've done. And don't take it that because I don't agree with you on this one that I feel that you're, you feel that I'm gutting everything that you've done or that sign ordinance. This is a unique situation. I still happen to believe people when they tell me something, especially if it's on the record. So Ms. Little, I think she's here, right? She's a developer, she was. There she is. She's a developer. I'm aware that they've been trying to get this project going for more than, I want to say, 10 years. And the expectation was that when Burger King went in, it would be the stimulus or the stimulant, and unfortunately, it's been a little slow in coming. We want that area developed. I think it's to the benefit of Brownsville. It's to the benefit of the university. University Loop got placed there, or Avenue got placed there because of the investment that the city played, made in the infrastructure out there. And I think what the university's done with its architecture is absolutely gorgeous. We have a beautiful facility out there, and I think, I would hope the developer understands that anything contrary to that or not conducive to the continued integrity of the architectural design that the university's established out there is not good for the university. It's not good for her development. I think she's, I hope they're aware of that. But with that said, next meeting, two weeks later, here we are, and we're talking about a new business going up that wants to go up. And I swear, until I got on the city commission, I had no idea that signs were such an issue. I'll be honest with you. I had no idea that signs were such an issue. And I agree that we don't want them overpopulating the place, but that's not what's going to happen here. And I can tell you that based upon what Mr. Sanchez represented, just because somebody else may make an application saying we did it over there, that doesn't mean that we're going to do it here. This is a unique situation. And the fact that our department, our planning department, worked with an applicant in trying to work out a compromise. I didn't see that the university was at the P&amp;Z hearing. Were they there or were they not there? They had a representative there? Same, I assume the same comments or... Well, but the same comments or concerns were raised by the university. I just don't think that this sign is going to impact either the intent or purpose of the overlay district or what the university is doing out there. And I, I'm in support of it. I just don't see it on this one. But don't think that I don't appreciate everything that you and Brownsville Beautification Committee has done, because we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you, as far as discussing this issue. And again, the initial intent, I think, was 135, 150-foot sign. Well, they're down to 75 feet. While it still sounds like a lot from a distance, it's, my understanding is that it's not that high. And we want to make them at least a viable business so that they can succeed. Not, we don't want to set them up to fail. We want to set them up to succeed. That's my two cents, Leland. And I do appreciate your emails and your concerns, but on this one, I just, I don't see it.
I'm not finished. At that planning and zoning meeting, the electronic part of this sign wasn't even in the plan of the planning and zoning group. That was added on by the planning and zoning board as a kind of an afterthought. And they actually encouraged them to add the electronic part of this sign in when they come up before this committee. The sign wasn't even completely designed at the time that they presented this sign to the planning and zoning board for the public hearing. So basically, we really didn't get a, to see exactly what the sign was going to come out to until right now, tonight. And again, I'm opposed to this based on the electronic part of it, the height and everything else in this tourist overlay district. I think that would be non-beneficial to the city personally, and that's my opinion, Honorable Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Salinger. We appreciate your input.
May I have a question?
Go ahead.
Ben, when, I assume that this was not drawn up at the P&amp;Z meeting, correct? It was drawn up at a private location, and there was discussion between our staff and the gentleman from... Is that correct?
Okay. This application came at least three times before P&amp;Z. And at the second meeting, P&amp;Z directed staff to work with both the university and with the applicant on coming to some compromise. Well, the university has already stated that there's no compromise in this case.
I'm sorry, who said that?
Well, the university has said, tonight, they said, we don't want a sign, completely. But...
No, I don't think they said that.
Hold on, hold on. We know where you're coming from.
We know what you said.
Okay. But let me, P&amp;Z directed staff to develop a compromise. We came up with a sign on my right. The P&amp;Z is correct. The gentleman is correct. P&amp;Z added the message sign, but the message sign was always on the Ueta proposal. They have three signs.
That was my understanding.
Yes. But our recommendation, based on the architecture of the university, they added the, you know, we developed a sign, and they added a message board. That was approved. Since then, Ueta, the Ueta group has come up with a new design. And tonight, the commission can vote and approve either one. And this is the, this is their building, which is, which is very nice. And what we did was that, you see, we copied this part of the building, which is the top of our sign that staff designed, you see? So we were trying to match their building.
Oh, for the purpose, yeah.
Yeah. So what they've come up with is now this little roof. They switched the message board from the second one to the first, and Ueta right below it. You know, the commission can approve either the P&amp;Z concept or the concept being proposed by the Ueta group tonight. But the height, the colors, the neutral colors, this is what we showed the P&amp;Z. This is what we showed the P&amp;Z that night, was that...
So it's a combo between the two?
Right. This is the Ueta proposal, and this is our proposal. They did lower it down to 75 feet from here to here.
I would assume the reason they're putting the electronic one on top is because of the fact that it's a smaller sign than they were anticipating building.
It's tall. That's correct.
Well, all right. Are there any other comments for the public hearing?
Would it close?
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioners Nettles. All in favor?
Would it approve?
Hold on. All in favor? Give me an aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Action.
Excuse me. You need to mention which sign, the city design or...
We haven't voted on it yet. That was opposing in the public hearing, Ben.
Oh, okay. When you come up, you select a sign.
Now I know why they jumped on you. Action.
I'm going to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria.
With the one, the one where it's covered with a roof?
Motion to approve the submitted Ueta design by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by? Seconded by Commissioner Nettles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. We have two nays. All right. Item?
Commissioner Royo, and who was the second name?
All right. Item 13?
Item 13, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 2006-1456, Amending the Code of Ordinances by Creating a New Section 102-80 Entitled Pole Attachment Rates and Which Provides For Any and All Pole Attachment Rates and Amending Sections 102-80 Through 102.105.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission. My name is James McCann. I'm the Director of TND at the Brownsville Public Utilities Board. What you see before you tonight is a proposal to have a uniform pole attachment rate applicable to all entities attaching to Brownsville Public Utilities poles. This was recommended after legislation change in the form of Section 54.204 of the Texas Utilities Code requiring such action.
If I recall, the PUB boards already approved this. James, did you already present it to us?
They approved this resolution at the... They approved this resolution at the February 13th meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Alright. This is a public hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hernandez, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, James. Item 14?
Item 14, consideration in action regarding a request to fund the Valley Initiative for Development and Advancement.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, as an administrator, my name is Dominic Hallaby, the executive director of VIDA, and as an administrator, it's easy for me to get wrapped up in some of the statistics or numbers that we perform, like our 85% retention rate or 95% placement rate, but oftentimes, I have to sit back and be reminded of the individuals, like Annette Bai, who is a homeless individual, or she lost her house due to fire and was living out of her car, and was working at a fast food establishment making minimum wage, at the time that she received an acceptance letter from the college for an LVN program. Luckily, she had heard of VIDA and applied for assistance. We were fortunate because of her determination and her motivation to succeed, that we weren't gonna let financial or emotional barriers stop her from becoming a nurse. Thankfully for her and for us, as individuals that have to take our children to hospitals, she is now working at a local agri hospital, making $42,000 a year, and had just closed on her first house. So, I'm very excited about the prospects of being able to serve in the community of Brownsville, so that we can see individuals like Annette Bai, who was in McAllen, see individuals like her prosper in our community.
Let me ask you something.
Yes.
And Father, I need this, you and I spoke about this, but I need to, I need to set it on the record. The people that you're gonna be helping through this, which is, this is a wonderful cause, it is, okay? Now, has the university already told you that they have the space available, the classes available for what they're helping? Are you going into specific programs, or is it just entering into, into university studies for these people that are gonna qualify under VIDA?
Now, well, the primary thing is that we look at employer-driven programs, those jobs are in high demand first.
And the reason I bring this up is because the last time that we spoke, the university expressed to us that they did not have the space in the university or the classes available, aside from the RN program to service what VIDA is proposing.
Well, I would, perhaps with the exception of looking at the nursing fields or specific allied health programs, where they have a very limited amount of spacing, and the request or prerequisite on our end is that they need to have that acceptance letter first before we can start expending public funds on those individuals. We need to make sure that they can get into the program.
One more thing for clarification, please. This will be to accredited Brownsville University, correct?
Absolutely.
Or, or studies?
Absolutely, absolutely. We wanna make sure, because of the need, especially in healthcare, is so great, so daunting, that any individual who is accepted, we wanna make sure that they complete and finish and become employed. Anybody who has to go to a hospital, as, I'm very fortunate to have had my first daughter, my third child this past week, and I wanna make sure that there's nursing staff adequate to be able to assist my wife and my daughter when we go to those hospitals. So, we wanna make sure, you can see if you visit those places, that they need nurses, they need highly trained, highly skilled technicians to be out of there, and we can't afford to make sure that, we can't afford as a community to let that need go unfulfilled. So, anytime that there's a, a gap, if you will, we need the opportunity to fill that with high-quality students and residents.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Mayor, I'd like to come at you from a different direction. I have a, I have a tremendous compassion for the, for what you're trying to provide, but my fiduciary responsibility tells me that if we're gonna give you X amount of dollars, how much of it's actually gonna be used to train, and how much is gonna be used for administration and those type of things? Those are questions that I'm getting calls on, that the majority, the vast majority of the money, what people are telling me, they want the money used for actual job training for the people, and not just for salaries.
I do too. We actually operate on a seven and a half percent administrative rate, which is extremely low. One of the key cornerstones to our program, which confuses some individuals when you say administrative and what have you, is that we have counselors that work with the individuals every week to make sure that if they're accepted, they're going to finish. Those aren't administrative, those are the services that those individuals provide throughout the entire duration of the program. That's something we don't take for granted, and neither do the individuals that go through it. But our administrative rate is seven and a half percent. The vast majority of the funds go towards tuition or other auxiliary services that we would see as childcare, I guess, books, uniforms, things that would become financial barriers that could prohibit somebody from completing the program.
I appreciate that, 'cause my concern is the money comes from the people in the form of taxes, one way or another, it needs to go back to the people as much as possible to, to create these opportunities.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Pete, who's gonna monitor this? Hold on, hold on, Commissioner, Commissioner Royo had, had a question. Sorry.
Thank you. I wanted to ask you, has any study been made to determine what percentage of the students completing the program stay in the McAllen area, say?
How was that, 89%?
Right, we were, we were very fortunate to use the unemployment insurance independent wage data collected by the state to make sure that of those individuals that have gone through, how many were staying here? And we saw 89% remaining within our community.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's an excellent question.
Okay, let's, let's put all the first questions out.
And going back to what Commissioner Longoria was holding in on, there is no other, the students that come in and come into, to, to the program VIDA, they have to go through the university. You know how you read of other programs for CNAs and other, will this allow them to get, venture, you know, venture out into an additional program that they may have gotten accepted, accepted into here in the community, or do they must go through the university? I don't know if that was stipulated clearly.
Well, the big thing is that we go through a, as an organization operating in a very fiduciary, responsible manner, we go through an RFP process for training institutions to do that actual training. And there's certain stipulations that we place in when we receive those, those proposals back. And, and one has to do with the cost-effectiveness and what, you know, what we're gonna look at for the output versus the, the input of the training cost. And in Brownsville, the only institution that has been approved by our board to receive those funds is the University of Texas in Brownsville, at Texas Southmost College.
Okay, Commissioner Longoria, I'm sorry. Thank you. Pete, who's gonna monitor this, on behalf of the city? As far as the dispersment that goes out, is it gonna be your staff or?
Commissioner, I think that the first thing we need to do is probably draw a contract, if this is gonna be approved, draw a contract and then stipulate there in the contract what services we're gonna be, are gonna be provided. And then maybe we can monitor those contracts, I'm, what I'm saying, we, probably our internal auditor can probably go in there and ask for certain reports that we would probably include in the contract.
So, along with all of this, this also includes city staff time, you know, city staff is gonna be, have to be tending to the...
Well, you raise a question, so I would think that you already have some procedures in place from your dealings and your contacts with the other cities that can provide the information that's gonna allow the city with a minimal of time and oversight of those funds.
Oh, absolutely. We can demonstrate by the usage of the programs that we have in San Juan and Mercedes, how those cities are operating and overseeing those particular programs, gladly provide those to the, to the city here as well, in, in doing so through contract negotiations, so you can utilize that as a cue on how best to adopt that for the city of Brownsville.
Commissioner Royo?
How much are we talking about?
150, I think, that's what it was.
That's, that's the number that I was going to suggest, but I had some comments before we were, before we were gonna...
I only had heard a very small amount, seed money, something like that. I hadn't been given a...
Well, let me ask this question, in the other cities that you've been participating in, whatever amount it was that you've gotten, what do you, what do you also do with that money? Do you leverage it at all? Do you utilize it to get other state and/or federal funds?
Oh, absolutely. Generally, especially when you look at the federal government, as well as even the state and other private foundations, they recognize that the border communities are not the wealthiest in the United States. So, when you have the local communities investing heavily within job training programs and the need to improve their human capital, that sends a very strong flag for our ability to use those dollars to leverage additional resources. We've been very successful in leveraging the money we've received from the city of McAllen, almost to the tune of three to one. For every dollar the city of McAllen has invested, we've been able to pull in three additional dollars back to that city in state, federal, and private foundations. We just received in this January, $150,000 from the city of Harlingen, and that too looks like we'll be successful in leveraging for another $330,000 from the state, State of Texas, through the Workforce Commission. So, I think it sends a very strong message to the, to the state and the feds, that this is an important issue that needs to be addressed within the local communities along the border.
If you get those monies from the state, as you say you should, because of what Harlingen gave you, then how do you, are you, is that money basically, basically gonna stay in the Harlingen group, or is that gonna be dispersed to Brownsville, Harlingen, and McAllen?
Well, it, it depends on how we write the, the proposals. A lot of times, we'll utilize that leveraged fund and we'll say, in this case, we said Harlingen, 150, and we wanna match those funds. So, in this particular case, yes, it would be utilized and staying within Harlingen. But that, that doesn't mean that in the future, we'd wanna write the same thing in Brownsville, say, X number of dollars from the community of Brownsville, let's leverage additional resources for the training programs, for the occupations that best serve the needs of the city of Brownsville, and leverage additional resources here.
Mr. Hallaby, what about the next year and the year after? What do you do for funding?
Well, the, the benefit in a lot of those things is that, in the case of the city of McAllen, this was originally going to be a short-term process. They've seen the tremendous value that we've been able to bring to the table and the benefits back to the community. Hopefully, that we will be able to see additional, and I don't know if it's through direct general revenue of the city or whatever the future may hold, but hopefully, we'll be able to establish a future local funding mechanism within the city of Brownsville throughout this time, that'll allow us to have a more substantial staying power in Brownsville, and to continue to leverage additional resources for this community.
So, it's possible that, let's say, city doesn't approve it and, and we approve it for X amount of dollars for one year, and in the following year, this commission decides not to, VIDA leaves Brownsville, it's, you know, is that, is that the end of it?
Well, we have been, as an organization, we've been here for 10 years, and we have serviced Brownsville, it's just not at the level that we would like. We have serviced a number of individuals, probably less than 100, in a 10-year period, so that's a very small amount of individuals that we've been able to service. Well, I'm hoping with this...
What was the total number, over 5,000 or 3,000?
The total number is the organization?
That you've serviced since you?
Well, over 3,000, approaching 4,000, individual service. A vast majority of those have been in the Hidalgo County, even more specifically, the McAllen, and the direct neighboring communities of that city.
Does anybody else have any more comments? 'Cause I'd like to make a comment before, go ahead, Pete.
From a city point of view, the first thing we need to ask, is this for a public purpose? Because that's where city funds are supposed to be spent for. Is this, and this is something we have to answer, is this for a public purpose?
No, it clearly is, right? This is not a church-related organization.
No, this is a nonprofit, but they receive funds from other...
Actually, we had, we had our training, we had people, the churches got together, not just Catholic, but Protestant churches got together, just to use our halls to, you know, to introduce the program. Anyone interested in VIDA and trying to advance, you know, and we explained what the program, who can qualify, and what the program entails, we had over 500 and somewhat applicants, or people interested from the city of Brownsville, and that's just, you know, just at the beginning, just trying to, 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 you know, see how, how that would go, how the interest in the public would be. And we made sure everybody knew, you don't have to be Catholic, Protestant, you can be atheist, whatever you want, whatever. I mean, this is for the benefit of those who are in low income, who can, you know, make something for their, of themselves, they have three, four kids, they can't afford, you know, to, to go to, to college because they have two, three jobs, and yet they have the, the mind for it. You know, if, if we can provide something for them and leverage money from the government, that's, it's a win-win situation.
Let me, let me say this, I brought this to the commission's attention because, I'll just say that I'm a little disappointed that our 4A board has not gotten behind this particular project. We brought it to their attention, I know it's been presented to them on more than one occasion, and for whatever reason, it hasn't been approved. Part of the dilemma is the way that what VIDA does and what our 4A board is doing may be a little bit in conflict, but the way I've studied this, the way it's been presented to me, the way I understand it, is that this is another form of economic development, okay? We don't have company A saying, "We're gonna bring these jobs." What we are doing actually in this instance is we're investing in the human capital, the, the individuals themselves that are gonna learn, excuse me, those skills that are going to make them more marketable in the marketplace. Right now, Dominic, on a, how many hospitals in the valley are out there recruiting nurses from, not just throughout this country, but outside of this country? I mean, don't we bring them in on a regular basis?
I don't know.
Okay, so, we know that the need is there, nursing, medical-related jobs are good-paying jobs, those are the jobs that we want to be providing to our own homegrown talent. So, I think, we're not making a long-term commitment, but I think we need to make at least a year commitment and see where it goes. I'm hopeful that next year, the commission can see the fruits of your efforts, and the program will, will continue to sustain itself with some, with some support from the city. I am hopeful that the 4A board will see the wisdom of this and get behind this in addition, but I, I was not gonna, I was no longer gonna wait for 4A to act, so I wanted to bring it to this commission. Based upon that, I would specifically ask that we approve the request to fund the VIDA, the Valley Initiative Development and Assistance, in the amount of $150,000 as an initial investment, with oversight, the contract to be negotiated between the city and VIDA, and would again ask for the support of the commission on that motion. I have so made the motion.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item 16?
Item 16, consideration in action to adopt Budget Amendment Resolution Number 2006-019 to amend the General Fund and the Capital Projects Fund to appropriate $500,000 for the Dean Porter Park Project.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, we recommend approval.
Alright, we have, I'm sorry, motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo?
Seconded.
Who, who made, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hernandez made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 17?
Item 17, consideration in action to authorize the Brownsville Fire Department to donate two ambulances, one to the Matamoros Fire Department and one to the City of San Miguel de Allende.
Honorable Mayor, commissioners, we have two ambulances...
You have a guest with you? He looks familiar.
Yeah. We have two ambulances that, we've tried, one of them, auctioned them off once before, we haven't been able to sell it that way, so I would like your permission to donate them to Matamoros Fire Department and the City of San Miguel de Allende. They're obsolete, they have high mileage, and they're the equipment that we can use.
This is a, a very good will gesture on our part, and I hope that they can utilize these ambulances. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Royo? I'm sorry, Commissioner Longoria?
I just, I had a comment, Lenny, that as we look upon Mexico where they're going into their new sextenos, into their new, with their new, that we make contact with our sister city to notify whoever it is that's their newly-elected President Municipal, that they understand the concept of our sister-city agreements, you know, upon when, upon when we contact them. I know that Mayor has very good contact with Baltasar, but do we have that same contact with the new President Municipal in San Miguel de Allende?
The new one is not there yet, but I think this summer is, is when it's gonna be done, but we have a very good contact and relationship with the administration and also with all of their, we'll call it their ambassadors, their, their tourist bureau, their convention bureau, and economic development, plus along the university, so we do have very good contact with them. If you're not sure about that, chief, contact Mike Gonzalez over at BCVB, he knows everybody in San Miguel.
Okay, sir.
Alright, action, I'm sorry, who, who approved it? Motion by Commissioner Royo, seconded by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, Commissioner, I have a Comandante Sebastiano Ariano with the Matamoros Fire Department, he would like to say a few words to you.
Come on in. Pete Como.
Mayor, City of, uh, Brownsville and City Commissioner, the name of the Matamoros Fire Department, I want to thank full for this donation. Believe me, this ambulance is gonna help us to save life for our citizens, and I want to special thanks, uh, give the thanks for, uh, Fire Chief Lenny, to all the, to all that, uh, support that, uh, give us in, in all this year that I have, like, Fire Chief, I mean, this, this, uh, is a, is a very nice person, is a very nice, uh, Fire Chief, uh, I want to, I just wanna say thanks.
Chief, ya hemos visto muchas veces las condiciones en las que está tu equipo, con el que tienes que trabajar en Matamoros, y quisiera que, que pudiera haber más para ayudarte, verdad, y en el futuro quizá, verdad, como vayan las cosas, ir ayudándote, pero también te quiero felicitar si es propio decir, pero también, verdad, agradecerte todo lo que haces tú para nuestros hermanos en Matamoros, porque sé que a veces no tienes lo suficiente que se necesita para atender a la gente, y con lo poco que tienes, y con el trabajo que haces, te lo agradecemos bastante, todo lo que haces.
Gracias, antemano, nosotros en el departamento de Matamoros, lo que hacemos, lo hacemos con el corazón, y lo hacemos con el objetivo de salvar vidas y proteger propiedades.
Chief, gracias por estar con nosotros, usted sabe, creo que es el, uh, el reconocimiento que tenemos aquí, es que nosotros estamos juntos, los de Matamoros, seguimos trabajando juntos, y la cooperación entre los dos departamentos, uh, me da mucho orgullo, porque nuestros ciudadanos, ellos deben de saber que estamos, que ustedes están aquí para, para proteger cada uno de ellos, y me da mucho gusto, el, la, las relaciones que tenemos entre las dos ciudades, y gracias por reunir, y aquí tienen su casa.
Míamale, yo lo bendiga, gracias.
Gracias.
Item 19.
Item 19, consideration and action to support and accept the inter-local cooperation agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Ca, the County of Cameron for the 2006 Bryn, Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award.
Mayor, Members of the City Commission, good evening. Uh, this is, was formerly known as the Local Law Enforcement Block Grant, the last couple of years is now known as the Bernie Justice Assistance Grant Program, and this is a grant award that we share with the county, and we have to agree to the amounts, uh, before anything is, uh, dispersed to the county and the city. We have agreed, uh, between the county and myself to share the amounts respectively for the city, $34,306, and for the county, $37,306. The reason they keep more is for administrative fees, which is a little bit over 4%.
All right, this is an action item?
Mayor, before the, uh, I'm sorry, before the motion, I just wanted to, you know, let the chief know, I appreciate all the work that you all are doing, um, I would like you to possibly consider, um, I know we've talked about this a little bit, not in full detail, um, at our West Side Community Network Center, um, a lot of families that have young children have asked us, uh, about computers that were, uh, at one point promised to them at the network center, and, um, I wanna try to help fulfill that dream that was placed there, uh, by the staff at one point, and maybe if we can come together and look and consider maybe using part, you know, small portion of those monies, to maybe allow for some computers to be placed in there for the kids to come in and use, um, to help increase their education, if that's-
In regards to this money, there are some specific requirements, and I think strictly for law enforcement equipment. I'll go back and check.
Okay.
We already had made a commitment to the county and to the Justice Assistance Program to utilize this money to purchase computers, laptops, uh, but for the new police cars that are coming in. But definitely, we can talk about that through some other source of funding.
Okay, Chief, appreciate any consideration.
Yes, sir.
You may be referring to item 21, Commissioner.
Oh, the other one, the forfeiture, all right. Well, this is an action item?
You know what? I, I apologize for that, and thank you, Charlie, um, that was where that comment was gonna come.
Should've interrupted him earlier.
This is an action item? Motion to approve? Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rojo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 20.
Item 20, consideration and action to authorize the city manager to renew the terms of the contract with Congressional lobbyist Michael Parker.
Honorable Commissioner and Mayor, uh, Mr. Parker did visit this commission a few weeks ago, where he explained, uh, his work with the staff and with you in Washington. I can attest that, uh, Mr. Parker has been a valuable asset to the City of Brownsville. For example, uh, we opened bids tomorrow on a garden park drainage project, a project that was a stalemate, uh, going through, to the bureaucracy in Washington and in New Mexico, uh, but with his, uh, due diligence and his work, that project, uh, was, is now a success, where we are gonna open bids tomorrow, which will help that total, all of that community. Uh, Mr. Parker has been successful in opening the doors in Washington to us, with, uh, setting up meetings with high-ranking officials that we would not know where to begin. He's the next congressman, he knows who to contact, uh, he has been successful in our Washington trips and making sure that our itinerary is always full, and that we, uh, visit, sometimes truthful, but visit those key chairmen of those committees that do make the decisions in Washington. So, I ask you tonight to re, to renew his contract for the term of one year, and also for, uh, a sum of, uh, of $144,000 annually.
All right, this is an action item?
Would approve?
Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Make sure we bring it up, I, I know when he came to visit, the intent was to act on it that, that day, so, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll act on it sooner. Item 21.
Item 21, consideration and action to award a contract for the sale of 253 eight-liner machines for the Brownsville Police Department.
Mayor, Members of the City Commission, uh, the initial intent of these machines were to be, uh, were to be destroyed, however, we ran into some issues regarding environmental issues at the landfill, and then the other issue was, uh, to actually contract for the destruction of some machines that, uh, it was not cost-effective for the police department or for the City of Brownsville. So, the last option that was made available to us was the sale of those machines back to companies or individuals that were in the business of, uh, handling this type of machines. We requested the, uh, city purchasing department to advertise for, or solicit sealed bids for 253 eight-liner machines. Seven different companies, uh, submitted bids, uh, in regards to, in accordance with the, uh, the requirements or, or the specifications that are set forth, there was one, there were several responsive bidders, but the highest responsive bidder was Express Video out of Calabash, North Carolina, for the amount of $468.43 per machine, for a total of $118,512.79. So, we are recommending that the sale of these machines be awarded to Express Video of Calabash, North Carolina.
All right, this is an action item?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Rojo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Next item.
And Chief, I was hoping that, at this item, this is, you know, with some of those funds, if we could-
Commissioners, but also it's going to require, uh, a partnership with the school district for, as far as tutoring.
Exactly.
Okay? So, that's something that we can definitely work on.
Perfect. Thank you, Chief.
Item 22.
Item 22, consideration and action to adopt Resolution Number 2006-20-PC, determining the local bidder for a contract to purchase vehicles, determining that the bidder for a contract to purchase vehicles provides the best combination of contract price and additional economic development opportunities in accordance with Section 271.9051B2 of the Texas Local Government Code and related action to award a contract for the purchase of police-packaged sedans and other vehicles, basically.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, good evening. Uh, before you is the purchase of 41 different vehicles, 25 of which are those that were just spoken of, those are the 25 police packages, uh, packaged sedans. Uh, there are an additional six police vehicles attached to that, not under the local option, though, and beyond that, there are an additional 10 vehicles for other city departments, if, if you don't mind. The legal advertisement appeared in the Brownsville Herald on December the 5th, pre-bid meeting was conducted on December 21st of this past year. Sealed former bids were open. On, on the 18th, three bids were received. As part of the bid form, purchasing included a section whereby local bidders could request invocation of the local preference statute, of which we have, and we will be asking you for that. The, the, the recommendation is, is to acquire the 25 police sedans using the local preference rule, award to Tippetex Chevrolet. These, these are the existing cars that we have now, they've proven to be very durable. The newer model, which is the old six, will be similar. The other purchase are a 206 model Chevrolet Silverado pickup for the Brownsville Urban System, Tippetex Chevrolet. Purchase of one Chevrolet Trailblazer SUV for the Planning Department through Tippetex Chevrolet, that's item three on your packet. Number four is, uh, purchase of four new 06 model Chevrolet Trailblazers SUVs for the Brownsville Police Department. These are part of the six added to the 25. Number five is consideration and action to award purchase of a Silverado pickup truck, one pickup truck to, to Traffic Department by Tippetex Chevrolet, which was a low, low bidder vendor. Two 06 Chevrolet Trailblazer SUVs to the Brownsville Public Library, Tippetex Chevrolet, again, low bid. Seven, purchase of one 06 model F-E350, 12-passenger van for the Brownsville Traffic Department, Tipton Ford, eight. Purchase of one new Ford 550 Super Duty two-wheel drive for Brownsville Public Works Department, Tipton Ford, low bidder. Purchase of two 06 model F-150 pickups for Brownsville Building Inspections to Tipton Ford, low bidder. Number 10, purchase of one Chevrolet Trailblazer SUV, four-door, Building Inspections Department, Tippetex Chevrolet.
How many cylinders are on those things?
Six.
Six? Okay. Sure.
Two new 06 model Ford Expeditions XLT SUV for the Brownsville Police Department, uh, low bid, Tipton Ford. There are a total of 41 vehicles for purchase before you, totaling $897,874.65. Request your authorization to purchase.
I hope we're not paying sticker price.
No.
All right, this is an action item? Motion approved by Commissioner Longoria?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ivan.
Thank you.
Item 23.
Item 23, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase of office furniture for the Brownsville Police Department.
Mayor, Members of the City Commission, good evening once again. Um, this is, uh, to purchase furniture for one, for the, uh, classroom that we have, that we're going to be turning into office space. Uh, this is under a state contract from Southern Metal Industries of Ringgold, uh, Georgia, in the amount of $22,015. And funding is available through forfeiture account.
Any questions?
Nope.
Action?
Approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Rojo, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 24.
Discussion, item 24, discussion regarding St. Charles Park.
I bet it'll be short.
Mayor, um, I wanted to begin the discussion real quick, I wanted, I wanted to thank Commissioner Hernandez for, um, for putting this on the agenda, um, I think it was about-
Thought he was gonna talk about it.
Right, well, I, I wanted to make a couple of things known first, because I think it was real important, since it's in my district. It was about New Year's Eve, um, when I happened to be going by St. Charles Park, and I actually had to stop and get down and walk it, because it was just in shambles. It was in a horrible, horrible, uh, what he called state. And so, at that point in time, I called Charlie, and I told him, and I'd asked him, um, we need to shut the park down. And I want to make it very clear on, on why I asked him to do that. It was important that, of all the things that I saw in the park, I just couldn't stand for the kids or families to actually be in there and, and, and just sit there and, 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 uh, and partake in what was there. It was real filth, uh, broken beer bottles, what do you call it, uh, there were some blades around, um, two sides, blades, what do you call, found on the floor. Uh, there was a whole, just bunch of, every square inch of, of the tables were graffiti, um, and so it wasn't right. And so, I didn't want any of the kids to be around that, I didn't want families to take their kids out there. Uh, sections of the iron gate were actually ripped off. By who? I don't know. How did they do that? God only knows. Um, it just didn't make any sense. So, I'd asked him to take that down in hopes of we could shut it down and go back and fix it up. This past week, I got an opportunity to, uh, run into some kids, and I go by there at least once a week, ran into little, two little girls that were reading the sign on the front gate, and I asked them, "Do you know why the park was closed?" And they said, "No." Well, they said, "Well, I think somebody did something bad in there." I said, "Well, yeah, they, they kind of, you know, dirtied the park." And I said, "I want you all to have a clean park, and we're gonna open it real soon, but we need you and your parents to be very vigilant in your area and understand that you need to take proper ownership of it, okay? We need to let authorities know when somebody's doing something that they shouldn't do." So, I, I, I saw the kids that afternoon, and it was, it was, it was a shame that they couldn't go anywhere to play, and they had to read the sign, but I think they left knowing that we were gonna do something about it. Years ago, back in 91, uh, former Commissioner Harry McNair had made, made an offer to help take over that park, or help care, you know, be a caretaker for it, um, and offer, uh, what he called his staff to clean up the park. Well, there was a lot of issues regarding that, and, and basically saying, "Well, you know, there's gonna be a liability, and we shouldn't do that." We have student organizations that can adopt a highway, then I'm sure we can have people that want to take care of a park and clean it up, allow them to do that, with proper documentation, with making sure that we're correct on that. So, speaking with him earlier this morning, you know, he was in, he was in shock to see what he saw, too, uh, but he did say that the offer would still be on the table, um, if the city ever decided to, to go back on that. And closing, part of the recommendations, and I think we all need to discuss what should happen to that park, I would hate to see a chain-link fence in there. I would hate to see us remove the fountain. If we were to say at Dean Porter Park, "Let's remove the fence and put a chain-link," if we were to say at Dean Porter Park, "Let's remove the fountains," there would be an uproar of people saying, "Why are we doing that?" My people in my district have every right to have a beautiful park in their area, and for us to take that away would be wrong. I would like to go back and look at security, so that it's, we keep it beautiful, yet we need to amend that fencing a little bit, because it is a little bit difficult to see people, that, and we, you know, it's difficult to see some of the illegal activity, but we should put our resources, if Mr. McNair and, and, and his family would care-take for it, that means that'd be less money that we have to pay somebody to go and clean it up, therefore, we could use that in turn for security and to better manage it. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, and, um, basically, from my point of view, it was unsafe, but I look forward to hopefully with your all's help, getting this back up, getting this open once again.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hernandez, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, not much, but, no. Mayor, the reason I put this item on the agenda, I think it's really important to note that, first of all, we should've never gotten to this point, the parks should've never gotten to this condition, and I'm very disappointed that it happened. Um, there was probably a million, million-point-two money spent of, uh, I believe it was all HUD money, Ben, wasn't it?
HUD money.
All HUD money to, to build that park in that neighborhood, because there was a tremendous need for a park in that neighborhood. My, one of my, my first thoughts was, if that happened around Dean Porter or the north side of Brownsville, the people, the neighbor would not stand for it. We'd be, we'd be getting calls and calls and calls.
Absolutely.
But the fact is, on St. Charles, uh, it's kind of a forgotten area, and, probably by all of us, we're probably all guilty of not paying attention as much as we should, and I commend Commissioner Camarillo for stepping up to the plate and doing what he did. But I, I think we have, we have a need to go back in now and redo it, um, maybe an adopt-a-park program is not a bad idea for all parts of time, not just, not just for that park. And, um, I was gonna hope and ask Beautification Committee to, to work with us, Mayor. After the, after the night's vote, that may not be, uh, may not be possible.
I think, I think they will.
We'll ask them for it.
Please.
Please. Will Commissioner Camarillo ask?
I, I think it's really important, that park's a beautiful park, uh, at one time it had maintenance, it had security from 3:00 in the afternoon till 10:00 at night, uh, the security was taken off, it went down, it went down fast. The security was put there for a reason, because they knew they were gonna have problems, so, we need to revisit the entire park system and, and, and meet with, um, the city manager and, and Skip Keller, and come up with a plan to not have to face this issue again. Thank you, Mayor.
It would've been good if somebody from the Parks Department had been here this evening. All right, uh-
They're out of town, Mayor.